Good evening. This is the April 4th, 2024 Smyrna Municipal Planning Commission Meeting. I'll call this meeting to order, and I guess this meeting is the first meeting of the Planning Commission New Year. I guess it's officially, we can officially celebrate that. So with that, if you'll stand, I'm going to lead us in prayer, and Mark has the pledge tonight.
Father, thank you for today. Thank you for our town and for, and so for richly blessing us here. We have so many opportunities that others don't, and for that, we're truly grateful. Thank you for this commission. Thank you for the people that are here tonight to serve, that are volunteering their time and efforts to make sure we have a better Smyrna. Thank you for our Planning Commission staff, for all that they do as we continue to grow. Be with us tonight as we go about the decisions of the town. Grant us discernment, wisdom, and help us to be fair in all that we do tonight. Forgive us where we fall short, for it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Our next item is citizens' comments. Okay, I'm going to take the opportunity to welcome Matt and Selena. This is the portion of the meeting where we have allotted five minutes for you to tell us about yourself. And, uh, no, we'll...
This is the hazing portion.
Yeah, this is the hazing portion. So our next item is election of officers for this planning commission year, and with that, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Jeff.
So obviously, we have two positions, which would be chair and vice chair, and we traditionally will take nominations for the chair first. Are there any nominations for chair of the planning commission?
I'll move to nominate Tim Morell to return as chair.
All right. Have a nomination of Tim Morell. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, nominations will cease, and all those in favor of Tim Morell as chair say aye. Those opposed, nay. And then motion passes. Second, we have the vice chair. Are there any nominations for vice chair?
I'll nominate Mark Atkins.
All right. Mark Atkins has been nominated for vice chair. Are there any other nominations? Seeing no further nominations, nomination ceases. All those in favor of Mark Atkins say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay, and motion passes. Okay, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, we are now on to the approval of the minutes of the March 7th, 2024 meeting. Counselor, are the meeting minutes in order?
In order, Mr. Walker.
Any questions or comments from the commission? If none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the minutes.
I have a motion to approve the minutes from Amy. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second from Miranda. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the March 7th, 2024 meeting minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. We are now on to old business. The first item is a sketch plat, Linwood, Ammable Road, Independent Hill Road, owner, developer Drepack.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the developers have requested this be deferred for one month, and so, and to not be considered tonight.
Okay, and by one month, we mean until the next meeting?
Till the May, till the nay, till the next meeting.
To the, uh...
Yes, sir.
Yeah, May meeting.
The May planning commission meeting.
Okay. So we, we have a deferral request until the next planning commission meeting in May? Any discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move, I move to approve the deferral for the next planning commission meeting.
Charles, was that a second?
Second.
Second, okay. I have a motion and a second for the deferral until the next planning commission meeting in May. Any further discussion? All those in favor of deferring signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is deferred until the May 2024 planning commission meeting. Our next item is site plans, 323 Lake Farm Road, owner, developer Jason R. Lloyd.
Yes, this request was deferred a couple of months ago to this meeting, and they have actually withdrawn that from the agenda.
Okay, so there'll be no action on our part, correct?
No action necessary, they have withdrawn it.
Okay. Okay, our next item under site plans is Newberry Townhomes Lot 1, Ammable Road, owner, developer Larry L. Davis, Sr., Heidi Kilimanjaro-Davis, Newberry Prop Co. LLC.
And I promise, we are going to get to an item to consider at some point, but this, this has also been requested to be deferred.
Okay.
One, till the next meeting.
Okay, so we've got...
Have to call Connie, tell her to get dinner ready. Now, really, it could go pretty well, right?
Tell her to put another plate down, I'll come on over too. Okay, so we, we have another request to defer until the May 24, 2024 planning commission meeting. Any discussion on this? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to defer for one month, or until the next meeting?
A second. A motion and a second for deferral until the May 2024 meeting. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving this deferral signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This is deferred until next planning commission meeting next month. Okay. Uh, we're going to try one more here. This is agenda item number three under site plans, Spring Branch Townhomes Phase 1, 602 and 604 Rock Springs Road, owner, developer, Green Trails.
So, this is the site plan for Spring Branch subdivision. They, this is the first phase of their development, which does have 12 single-family detached dwellings and 77 townhomes. Due to the number of dwellings as part of this phase, a second access point is not required at this time, so they do have a temporary access drive that is developed in the back part of this first phase, which will act as their turnaround for fire apparatus and such, so that second access point will come at a later point during a different phase. A single access point is shown off of Rock Springs Road, and then amenities as part of this phase include a fire pit area and a playground. Vehicle or use area for the site, this, a couple of these numbers have been modified since packs went out last week, so proposed for the vehicular use area on the site is 2.28 acres, and that would require 9,964 square feet landscaping. The applicant is showing for 10,608 square feet, so meeting our requirements. Total parking required of 395 spaces, and they're showing for 399, and handicapped spaces are not required as part of this development, but they are showing for two round amenity areas. Landscape plan shows a type C landscape buffer around the western property lines abutting the R4 zone properties. There is some existing vegetation along the R4 zone properties. A portion is to remain, as so as to keep a more robust landscape buffer. In addition, trees and shrubbery mixture are shown lining road frontages throughout the development. A variety of shrubs and trees are shown around the common area and amenity areas. Architecture elevations for the townhomes and single-family detached dwellings show a mixture of brick, stone, and fiber cement board siding, which meet the requirements set forth within the approved PRD. Standard comments 1 through 6 will remain at this time. Couple staff comments were addressed, so staff comment 1 is regarding the minimum fire flow, and just that general comment that any building over 3600 square, square feet will increase the required minimum fire flow, more of a standard comment. Comment 2, a foul plat will be required to be submitted and recorded dedicating public easements prior to issuance of building permits, as a, another standard comment. Comment 3, adequate fire flow exists for this phase, but not for the remainder of the development at this time. The town does have a water line improvement project underway, which will address this issue at a later point, so we are adequate for this portion that has been presented tonight. Comment 4, we ask them to show the required bus stop at the entrance near Rock Springs Road. We have had some comments from the school board in the past that they would not enter public, or private roads, rather. There's been summers where we've seen they do enter private road subdivisions and apartment complexes, so we do know they do go in some portions, but it has been, in the past at least, that we do try to keep these bus shelters located along public roadways for easy access for the school buses, so we asked them to shift it. Their response was that they would like to keep it in the existing location, which is nearby the amenities. They would coordinate this with the school board to determine an appropriate location, so if the school board deems it appropriate to leave where they have shown, we just ask that they provide approval from the school board that they are okay with the location planned. If not, we do need to see that bus shelter located near Rock Springs Road, similar to the adjacent Hertz Branch Development did. So comment 4 will remain at this time. Comment 5 was a mix-up with the architectural elevations pages, meant for all of the units. That has been addressed, can be removed. Comment 5, 6 is, we ask them to ensure those fire hydrants are within 500 feet of each unit. They have done that, so that can be removed. Comment 7, to show the impervious surface ratio for the phase, and they have done that, can be removed. Comment 8, ask them to show the driveway length minimum of 38-foot setback from the sidewalk to the front wall of the house to provide adequate parking without impeding sidewalk area. They did label it as such, however, it's not being shown, so we just need them to show that driveway a little bit longer in length to meet the 38-feet requirement. Comment 8 will remain. Comment number 9, we ask them to shift the trees outside of any proposed utility easements. They have done that, so comment number 9 has been addressed. Comment 10, there is a small portion in the southwestern portion of this development. Parcel data that we received from the property assessor shows about a, I believe, a 13,000-square-foot area that they are not showing as part of the development, so as part of their ALTA survey, they are not showing that on their end, so they noted that they will get with the property assessor and try to get this sorted out, so comment number 10 will remain at this time until we get that all figured out, and we'll hopefully have that figured out before they get building permits issued. Comment number 11, per the fire code, any building over 30 feet in height does require 26-foot wide driveways for roads, so that comment will remain, just to ensure that, it's more of a standard comment, just to ensure that we are meeting that fire code requirement. Comment number 12, ask them to provide construction details for the temporary drive, and the temporary drive is required to be removed prior to building permits being issued for Phase 2, so we didn't see any construction details for that temporary drive provided within these plan sets, so comment 12 remain. Comment number 13, as part of the elevations, we did notice that some of these units may have covered patios or porch areas. We just wanted it to be noted that the setback warrants will need to be met for any structures that are covered, attached to these units. Comment 14, a mix-up regarding the parking calculations numbers, that has been addressed, can be removed. And then, comment number 15, there was a sidewalk being shown along the temporary drive in the back of the development. There was being shown on some pages, not others, that has been addressed, and there will be no sidewalk along that temporary drive, so that comment can be removed. So, all that's been said, staff comments 1, 2, 3, 4, 8, 10, 11, 12, and 13 will all remain, all fairly minor issues that staff believes can be sorted out prior to issuance of building permits, so with that, staff recommend approval with those remaining comments.
Mitchell, I know we spent quite a bit of time on this one. Is what we're seeing consistent with what we've previously had before us and have approved?
Yes, for the most part, there is some slight modifications that staff will be reviewing administratively as far as a PRD is concerned, as far as the layout is concerned of it. Staff did have some concerns about long, straight driveways that might promote speeding of sorts, so we asked them to kind of shift some things around a little bit, just to kind of cut back on that for the residents of the area, so we're working on that as a, a staff level, but yes, with that, everything is in accordance.
Okay.
I will note the one thing in that that is a little different. The, the mix, the approval had about 192 townhomes and 21 single-family, and that has changed to 186 townhomes and 27 single-family, so the number of single-family units are a little higher than what we saw at the PRD, and other than the few road layout changes, other than that, it's basically what you looked at when the PUD came in originally.
Okay, help me with one thing here. We usually require a 35-foot setback...
Yeah, item number 8.
...from the garage, and I notice it's 38 from the sidewalk. What, what, what's the difference here?
This is to, this came from Public Works Memorialion Permits and Such. We noticed there is an issue with 35 feet when you hit to the sidewalk in instance like this. Two vehicles stacked behind each other tend to encroach on the sidewalk. You then have issues impeding sidewalks, which we want to try to avoid to, for anyone traversing the area on foot to do so safely, so increasing this 38 feet will allow for that. There are instances where sidewalk is within the right of way, and you don't have that issue at that point because that extra little buffer of a grass strip between the length of the driveway and where that sidewalk begins typically is not a problem, but instance like this where it's all private streets, we just got to make, watch out for that.
It's, it's kind of, kind of an ADA issue, can't block the sidewalks, basically. That's where that came from. It's usually only in a situation where you have these private streets.
Which, uh, item number, uh, which one was it, about the school, school bus stop?
Comment 4.
The school board will make that decision, I assume, right?
Correct.
But these are private streets, will the school buses, if they had to, come into the privacy?
That, we've always been under the impression they won't, but some have gone into private streets, so that's why we're leaving up the school board to decide what they would like to do.
So if they, by chance, were to move it off the front entrance area, then they would come into the subdivision to pick up the children?
It is currently being shown inside on the internal streets, so if the school board says it's okay where it's at, we'll just need them to provide documentation and such.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's their policy, unless they've changed the policy, and I'm not aware of it, that's their policy, is they don't want the buses to leave the public streets.
Right.
But they have, I mean, Altideepo, I know that one was internal to that project, and departments that are behind Target, they come up and kind of do the little roundabout area, that's actually a private street too, so they do in certain situations.
It's really their call.
It's, it's their call, it's their buses, and, and, and we're trying to provide a place for the kids to stand out of the weather, out of the rain, and, um, when they don't, because they don't typically leave those public streets, so...
And isn't the idea that the bus would go through the whole development? I mean, there's nowhere for the bus to turn around, so I'm just trying to figure out the path, right?
Correct, and there'd be that temporary drive in the back, which the fire department would also use if they needed it to, on which they couldn't, theory, use as well.
Yeah, temporarily, they'd have that temporary drive that they would turn around if they do choose to go with where they've got it shown.
Okay, any other questions for Mitchell or staff?
Do you know how many phases there are to this project?
I think there's three, I think. This is the first, their next phase, they'll have to lay whereabouts, talked with our utilities program, I know you had asked the question about the timing on the water line improvements. It is in the budget for next year to do the design, and then the following budget year would be the construction, so realistically, you're 18 months to two years away from construction completion to where they could do the next phase, based on, to get the fire flow, out of, fire flow there. Which by the time they build this phase, it'll probably be 18 months to two years, so that probably would move on into that next phase fairly soon, would be my guess.
And at that point's when you'd have that Ludbury connection, that second access point that we refer to.
Yeah, we talked about that one.
Right.
And that will come with Phase 2?
Yes.
Do I have a motion?
Move to... Go ahead.
No, please.
A motion to approve with staff comments.
A motion to approve with staff comments, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is approved. We are now on to new business, rezoning request. Our first item is Matt Huff, Fortitude Trail, PRD amendment.
Yeah, this item and the, and the next item are tied together, they're two, they're two separate requests, but they're, they're kind of conjoined as well. This first request, the Burnett Ridge was a PRD, it was approved, oh, a year, or maybe 18 months ago, I can't remember exactly, but it was, it was for 70 lots, all single-family, and this, this request would essentially reduce that from 70 lots to 60 and remove about 4.2 acres from it. And that 4.2 acres would then be added to the adjoining PRD, which is the next item on your, your agenda. This PRD, there's a mix of, kind of zoning of R3 and a couple of PRDs of Woodmont and Colony Estates at Green Tree, uh, PRDs. This would be a medium-density, single-family residential area, as supported by our land use plan, and this is consistent with that. There's really no major thoroughfare issue, plan issues or anything on this one. They did, one other change, in addition to, again, removing that area and about 10 lots from it, there is a little bit of a change in some of the proposed amenities. They had a pickleball court shown before, they're adding, just going to take that out and add a playground. Everything else with regards to the overall layout and types of houses and all that, it's not changing. This would have a minimum fire flow of 1,000 gallons per minute at 20 PSI, and to achieve that, there's going to have to be kind of an off-site water line extended to it, for, at least for Phase 2 of this development, and that all, that all ties into the adjoining development as well. And there's a road name that's going to have to change, pending this, if this all gets approved, so that's, which is a relatively minor deal, but did want to point it out to them. And there is also part of this, there was a, the, part of what they're taking out would remove a detention area, and so, that would be used for this development, so any of that area that is going to, that would be going to that detention area, is going to have to go to, into that adjoining development, and so there's going to have to be some agreements signed between the two developments to, and easements granted, and those kind of things to make that work. So that's all stuff that can come later, but we, again, we wanted to, to point those out as we were looking at this. But again, this basically would extend, tie into the existing road of Fortitude Trail, which is in Green Tree, as well as tie into a future connection into the Woodmont development, and with this would also tie into the future Colony Estates, um, development, if this were, is, is approved as well, again, that next item on your agenda, so, so it would ultimately have a, a better traffic flow in that area because you're going to have more connections to, to the adjoining developments, so, um, staff would recommend approval of this, of this proposed change.
Questions for Kevin, or any comments?
On this and the next application, they're, they're essentially a unified, um, layout. Could you discuss, there's a very robust tree canopy on the existing property, can you discuss the landscaping and buffer plans?
Um, there's, as, we really don't have any buffering really required, this is all single-family, and all the surrounding developments are single-family, so we wouldn't have a requirement of a buffer, um, so, as, from that standpoint, um, and...
I guess I was thinking more of retention of some of the existing tree canopy.
Right.
Rather than a buffer, per se.
Yeah, and this would, I think they were, and within this development, they are on that, kind of that western, southwestern side, there's some existing tree canopy, I know they're keeping there, as well as kind of buffering where the Woodmont development is. I think they are, in that area there, I think they are showing some of that remaining, as well as on the Woodmont side, that was some open space and tree areas that's going to remain as well. In the, the adjoining proposed development, I don't recall there being as much discussion about that within that, the pattern book that was submitted to us. There is, there is some open space areas that are going to be left alone, or, well, detention or open areas, so that there's opportunity there potentially to save some of those existing trees. But there's nothing shown, per se, on that adjoining development, at least, to do that.
Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This rezoning request is approved. Okay, so now we're on to the next item, which is Rob Mulchon, Ryan Hill Drive, PRD amendment, so this dovetails in with the one we just heard.
Yes, yeah, this is a, a PRD amendment. This was an existing approved PRD from, well, I think it was originally approved back in like 2007, uh, for at least part of this tract, and then, um, then in 2018, there was a reapproval, or an amended approval at that time, which, um, basically changed what was originally approved, which was something similar to what you have in front of you tonight, to several, I think eight large estate lots, and then maybe three small lots, kind of on the, kind of the southeast, southwestern corner of this, where Skinner Drive kind of did ends into the property on the west side. And so, that is what is approved currently, is the, basically 11 lot... And so that is what is approved currently, is the, basically eleven lots here. And so what this would do would be to, to obviously change that to the eleven lots to a hundred and thirteen lots. Shrouding zoning is, again, there's a little bit of an R one here, there was one track that's had an R one zoning, but R three and then the two PRDs developed around it. And then, again, medium density, single family is the land use plan for this area. And again, no roads that are shown on the thoroughfare plan are affected here. Again, this would add that four point two acres from Burnett Ridge to increase the total, and it increased the total number of lots from eleven to a hundred and thirteen, which does increase the density pretty substantially because you only had eleven lots on here before, so. Again, same minimum fire flow here, which again is, doesn't, not anticipate there's an issue there once they make all the improvements that are required to make. We had a note here, and this is just kind of for clarification, there was a kind of, there was a plat, the, when Green Tree was developed on the north side, there was a, an old right of way shown, or not, a right of way was shown and being dedicated there. With this plan, they're not going to utilize that right of way, so we want to go through the process to dispose of that because the town, there's never going to be a road on it, the town doesn't need to maintain ownership of that right of way. And so there's a couple kind of things, we'll just have to work through that. Again, that was mainly just for everyone's knowledge, this is not, it really doesn't affect one way or the other, this development. And also that Woodmont had actually had a cul-de-sac shown in phase ten, and that they're showing tying at the road end, so they'll have to amend that plat. That plat has not been recorded, they just have to have a, an amended plat to show that road connection happening versus just the cul-de-sac. We had a few comments regarding the, again, that proposed water line, which is really to serve phase two of Burnett Ridge for fire flow purposes. They've got that shown now. There, the, they've shown a construction entrance, they are going to have to utilize a little bit of an existing city street. They're going to primarily come from Rocky Fork Road, but they are going to have to come through a little bit of Green Tree to get to, through to Burnett Ridge and to this property. These are completely surrounded by developed subdivisions, and so you're going to have to hit a neighborhood somewhere. I did ask them to consider if they could utilize some of that undeveloped area of Woodmont as part of their construction entrance, but the Woodmont developer wasn't amenable to let that happen, so they couldn't get an easement there. They'd had some sixteen foot wide driveways on a couple of places shown, so I asked them to change that to eighteen feet, and they've done that. So comment ten can be removed, and we'd asked for some additional parking at their amenity center. And so they have done that, so that can be removed. So really comments eight, nine, ten, eleven can all be taken off. We did perceive the pattern books, this is the newer one that, that it did show their, their proposed, obviously the layout, but also the, the proposed houses they were proposing, which would be, again, something relatively typical as far as the type of materials and that sort of thing. Two car garages on all the homes. I think we had minimum sixteen hundred square feet of living area in, in those homes. And these streets are all public, there was no private streets here, so. And then their amenity package had a kind of a playground, a pavilion, and a dog park area there, along with their mail kiosk and et cetera. And they're kind of the center part of the development. So I think that's all that I've got. Staff would recommend approval.
Okay. Questions for Kevin?
Kevin, would you repeat what you said about the construction entrance for the Woodmont?
Yes.
We see two on here, so.
Yeah, there's a construction, their primary, they're going to kind of have to come through, there's a, there's an old construction entrance from when the Green Tree development was done, that still exists, and they're going to kind of utilize that because they have the rights to do, easement to do that. But that's going to tie into, I can't remember the name of that road. It's, eventually it's Fortitude Trail, Patience Drive. So they're going to have to come in that very, come into Fortitude Trail. I had asked them to at least take a look at utilizing kind of that undeveloped area of Woodmont, so they could avoid doing that. But again, they weren't able to make that work with the developer from Woodmont. They couldn't get, didn't have the right to cross his property to do that, so. So it will be, I think there's six or eight houses that are, at least for, for a while, there's going to be some construction traffic through there, which was either that or utilize Green Tree to Ryan Hill, and there's, there's, there's no way to get there for Hendricks Hill to Skinner. And I mean, there's just, anywhere you go, you're going to be driving through a neighborhood. So that, that's like the least, lowest amount of impact you could have.
I'm sorry, how many houses did you say that would impact?
Well, there's thirteen lots, one of them looks like it doesn't have a house on it.
Okay.
Kevin, how much additional parking did you request for the amenity?
They had four shown, we, they doubled it to eight.
Okay.
Other questions or comments?
Oh, yes, Mr. Chair, could you discuss the retention of the tree canopy and the amenities that are included?
Okay, Kevin, I'll let you address that.
Yeah, and developers, their representation is here, they might can address this as well. There's not really shown anything, there's nothing shown to be, that they're proposing to, to keep anything existing. There's three detention areas that they're going to have to have, so obviously those have to be cleared off. And then the lot areas, they do have the large amenity space in the middle and some other, still some green area that, could potentially have some, some of that area could remain, tree, or existing trees kept. It'd be difficult, there's some pretty, pretty significant topo changes on this property, so it's going to be difficult to develop and get building lots without taking trees out on a lot of it. If someone from, from the developer or their engineering company maybe wants to, could address that, if they've looked at that at all, that's kind of what I know, so.
Okay, and then as far as the amenities, I understand playground, a pavilion and a dog park.
That's what they're showing.
Do these meet our requirements as far as approved amenities?
Yes, so they're, certainly, we don't have a specific list of uses, they just have to be, have to have that area set aside and have it improved in some manner, so they do meet our requirements in that regard, yes.
Okay, and then as I understand it, there's really not a provision within, or ordinance or regulation within a PRD as far as tree canopy and, and retaining of a percentage of trees, would that be?
We do not have a requirement of that. We do on a multifamily or commercial site, if there is a tree that has, has to have an eighteen inch caliper, so that has to be a pretty established tree, if it cannot be saved, you have to replace it as near as possible to the site and that sort of thing. But on a single family PRD, there's not a requirement, no.
Okay, well, I know it's important to, is there, Charles, is there a representative here that could come and speak to this? Could you give us your name and address, please?
Good evening, Rob Mulchen, SEC. Regards to the tree canopy retention on this property, we don't see honestly any at this point in time. As Kevin alluded to, this property is more or less a very topographically challenging piece of property. Kind of the reason why this property hasn't developed until today on that side of things. Originally, as Kevin talked about, you kind of saw something like this back in two thousand seven regards to the development of this property. But then in two thousand eighteen, it reverted because some of the opportunities for the existing subdivisions like Burnett Ridge, Woodmont, weren't in place at that point in time for connections and connectivity on that side. So going back to looking at two thousand seven plan and the opportunities for all these streets, Skinner, one of those streets right now, that dead ends at the western side of our property, we're now able to establish a connection between Skinner on the western side, and then Skinner is actually off to the eastern side of that piece of property that's not actually developed on that right-hand side of the property there, allowing for Skinner to actually have connections through this property and actually make that one complete street, along with connections of Ryan Hill Drive, which then connects into what was established with Burnett when Burnett was approved on that side. So a topographically challenging piece of property, that's really, does not perform for us to be able to preserve any trees on this by the same constitution of that and being able to then provide a lot of continuity and connections for roadways from multiple points of connection for all these residents that live in this quadrant of this area to get to Rocky Fork and Rock Springs or anything else like that. So we're more or less closing a lot of empty gaps in roadway infrastructure that allows for a lot of different movements for traffic to get through this quadrant of the area, back to major roadways. So it gives lots of opportunities for citizens to go multiple ways without having to keep backtracking and going in one way, and one way, and one way in, one way out, so, on that side, so.
Talk to us a little bit maybe about your landscaping plan that, that, that's in your booklet here.
So from the standpoint, we've got the large open space in the middle, what we wanted to do was kind of have a centralized park for this portion of the PRD. Like I said, this is kind of two PRDs that are kind of conjoined in regards to Burnett. So what we wanted to do is create more or less a central park so that a citizen can utilize the sidewalks on both sides of the streets to get back to the centralized park. So you're really all with inside this development within a relatively short distance and timeframe to get to the park, to utilize that on that side. So we'll be putting in a pavilion, a playground for the children to play at, a dog park for those who want to let their dogs get out, or their pets, I should say, let their pets out and let them run around, but also providing an opportunity for some green space for kids to go out and establish some football, baseball, throw a frisbee, whatever it may be in regards to a larger green space on that side, which will have trees and other, you know, plantings like that established. And then again, along the detention ponds and stuff, we can look at reestablishing some trees and stuff along that as well, so.
Anything else for Rob while he's up here? Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
All right. Other questions or discussion?
It seems to me we, we had a potential opportunity, I'm not sure we're going to be able to take advantage of it with this application, but it may be time for us to take a look at some of our tree retention and canopy retention guidelines. Because I know as developers are looking at a site, they're going to look at those guidelines. And, you know, we're being asked to approve an increase from eleven units to a hundred and thirteen, and it seems that would present an opportunity for more, more robust retention of the tree canopy. And maybe that's something, if we can't achieve it today, we need to think about some modifications to our existing guidelines that'll make that more of a priority.
Okay.
We can certainly take a look at something like that and bring it back to you for consideration.
Okay, so back to this matter. Any questions, or any further questions concerning this amendment, PRD amendment? Not, I'll entertain a motion.
A motion to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments, so I have a second.
Second.
Matt? Okay, second, Matt. Further discussion? All those in favor of approving this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No, or no? All right. This motion is approved, six one. Our next item is Sean Saunders, seventy eighty five Florence Road, PID amendment.
Yeah, this is another PUD amendment, it's on Florence Road. It's, was a planned industrial district. It was approved about, well, about three and a half years ago now. Shrouding zoning is a mix of R one, R three and I two. Again, the land use plan would support medium density, single family here. The major thoroughfare plan does designate Florence Road as a minor arterial, and the required minimum right of way for this road is forty feet from the center line. That has been dedicated as a part of this development. The request is to amend the allowed materials for the buildings facing Florence Road from brick to split face block. This approved PUD was for six separate mini storage buildings, they totaled about forty-nine thousand four hundred and ten square feet. These buildings are required to be constructed with brick, stone or concrete siding on the ends of the buildings facing Florence Road. The elevation submitted for the site plan approval showed brick or stone on the ends of the buildings. The PUD approval allowed those two as well as the concrete siding. The buildings are actually constructed with the split face concrete block on the ends of the buildings instead of the brick or stone. And the developer has requested this, the PUD be amended to allow for that split face concrete block to remain. So that, that is really all that's being looked at or requested here, there's not anything new, there's nothing, all the buildings are there. They're not looking to change anything other than to allow those, which are basically five of the buildings that face, the ends face Florence Road, to, to utilize the split face block instead of the brick or stone. So that's what has been requested, and Mr. Saunders is not here, but he does have someone here representing him.
You'd like to say something, I'll allow you to, can you give us your name and address, please, first? Your name and address, please.
Brandon Baldwin.
Uh huh.
I'm here representing Sean.
And your address, Brandon?
One fifteen Jericho Street in Smyrna.
Okay, go ahead.
So on industrial, I guess, PIDs or PUDs, don't they, Smyrna have an ordinance for split face block? If that would be allowed? We have, we have one business that's very close and comparable with a nicer neighborhood across from it that has split face on it, but a small portion of it, the majority of it's actually metal. Considering all, we had to put block around the entire building, of course, we did that, but we did miss doing the brick on the fronts. And we have the split face block.
Were you, or are you the developer, the contractor on the project?
I, I was the one that actually did the block, yes, sir.
And when it was, when you did this, did you understand that when this was approved, that it was approved with either brick or stone as far as the, as far as the end of the units that faced Florence Road?
I did miss that detail. I thought that it did need something that was more decorative, and I seen like it was like a block or stone, but I did not miss, I missed the one facing Florence Road. You know, I assumed it just needed block and we wanted to do something more decorative on the front, is the reason we went with the split face. We missed the detail of the brick or stone part, but it was like a block or masonry for the actual sides.
Was the, was the, the plan that was approved, did you review that?
Yes, sir.
And did it state brick or, or stone as far as the?
So it said block or masonry from what I seen, but the, the fronts facing Florence Road said brick or stone.
Okay. Go ahead.
He asked a question, I just want to, you may know this, but I'll kind of describe, you asked about the industrial zoning allowing metal and things like that, right?
Yes, sir.
The reason this was sent to us and approved because it was a planned industrial development, which gives the body oversight to make changes to some of those ordinances you're referring to. He didn't have, I don't think he had the proper zoning there initially, did he?
It was an R one zoning.
It was an R one, so it was a residential zoning, and in order to put something like this in a residential area, they wanted to do a planned industrial development to give us oversight if we're going to allow it, to make it look a little more inviting, especially from the road front. So you're not wrong about industrial zones allowing certain materials, but when you do a PID, or PUD, or PRD, whatever, whatever they are, that gives the body oversight to make some of those calls, so.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you, sir. Kevin, do you, was there anything in staff's opinion that was unclear as far as what was approved?
I mean, it was on the plans, I mean, it was, you know, there wasn't anything, well, the, the PUD, again, it changed a little bit because the PUD gave them the latitude with the three options, and then they chose two of those three. with the three options, and then they chose two of those three. They knew exactly what they wanted to do, I guess, when the site plan came in. So, I mean, it's, it's on the plans, brick or stone. So, I mean, to us it was clear. So, I mean, that's all I can go by is what the plan showed. So.
Well, I, I guess I just want to make sure because I recall the plan specifically saying brick or stone as far as the elevations that were facing Florence, and I recall the discussion about it, you know, concerned for the neighborhood that it was being rezoned from R1 to a PID, and there was some concern about making it neighborhood appealing or friendly or, or, you know, that was a concern of, of the commission at the time. I mean, I hate that it was missed. I really do. But I, I felt like from what I've reviewed, it was very plainly on the, in the plans, and it was a very plainly expressed here from the commission level that this is what would be allowed for the ends or the elevations that would face Florence Road.
And it was a PUD versus like I1 or I2 because it, I think the planning commission and council wanted to know, they didn't want it to be, they didn't have an issue necessarily with, with mini-storage here, but they didn't want it to be other uses that might be allowed in, in an industrial district. It might not be as neighborhood-friendly as a, you know, mini-storages are obviously a pretty low impact from a traffic standpoint and all those kind of things. So I think that was certainly why the PUD was considered versus just an I2 zoning, which is what the property across the street is. That was zoned industrial when the area was annexed because that was an existing business that was there already when it was annexed, and so it was, was given that industrial zoning.
And to be fair, looking right out across the street, it is an industrial building.
Mm-hmm.
It's, uh, it's quite industrial looking.
Little bit, yeah.
So that was, I think, the reason of doing the zoning the way we did, to give us that oversight. I've been out there. I've driven by it. I don't, not tore up about it, to be honest with you, because it faces a pretty industrial-looking building. But from talking to some of you guys before, the consistency part of it has came up. That was the question that some of the feedback I got as well. So I've talked to Mr. Saunders about this, and I told him personally, I didn't have a huge displeasure with what I saw, but he even admittedly said, whether it's you, Brandon, or him, or both, we messed up. He said, we missed it. So he, he admitted that. So Sean's been awfully kind and considerate with all this, and I wanted to try to help support him with that, but I also understand the other side of this as well. So.
I guess that's where, I don't guess, I know, that's exactly where I fall. I mean, I've had, I can think of two occasions where something was approved and somebody came back in here and asked for forgiveness.
Whether intentional or not.
Exactly.
Accidental in this case.
And I certainly don't want to infer that it was intentional on any of the parts. You know, and I said this, and I've said it before, it's really tough when it involves someone that you know. You know, I, I can remember four or five years ago, we had something that involved somebody that Mark and I graduated from high school with and, and had to say, no, it's not a fun feeling. And it's not a fun feeling when someone builds a, a building and in the, I'm not talking about this case, but in another case where it was all metal and, and it wasn't approved that way, because you do realize the financial impact that is involved there. I know, I think I heard not too long ago, somebody stated about, you know, wanting to appear, rather appear in front of someone that they knew versus someone they didn't know. May, may make it easier on them, doesn't make it any easier on us. But I just, I hate that it was missed, and I understand it. I drove by too. And I mean, it's, it's a, it's storage with blocks on, you know, a block facade on, on the elevations.
It's block all the way around it.
Yeah, it is.
Except the front is what we wanted to look nicer, right, from the street, but it's block all the way around.
Well, as a matter of fact, you're right, and we, we allowed for that and requested, you know, landscaping as, as far as buffering of those elevations.
Well, and, you know, I've gone back and forth on this a little bit, but I, I can say this, the, the planning commission has to see it first, and then, you know, the council has to bless it if, as they see fit, and it's been through that process. So trying to change it is, is saying in a sense that planning and councils already looked at it and blessed it for what it was. And I, I don't, I can't tell you how people vote, but I have my serious doubts that it would get through that process again because the mistake wasn't made up here, right? And you admittedly said that. Sean has said that as well. So. It's out of respect to the people that have already gone through the process, really. It's the planning commission and the staff and everybody else. So.
I know we've got some folks that are new and maybe weren't here when this was going on. Do you guys have any questions or any comments? Okay. I'm not hearing anything, so I will entertain a motion.
Move to deny the request.
Have a motion to deny the request. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second to deny. Any further discussion? All those in favor of denying this PID amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This PID amendment is denied. We are now on to preliminary plats. Our first one is Gwyn Farms, Phase Four, Robert Gwyn Drive, owner, developer, Lennar Homes of Tennessee LLC.
Yes, this is the next phase of Gwyn Farms, which is there off of Rock Springs Road. This is 36.4 acres. It's 153 lots. It's part of the Gwyn Farms PRD. We had several comments. Many of these have been addressed, and several of these are also kind of our, some of our standard comments that would need to remain, which is really one through seven, or actually, we'll go ahead and mention number eight. That's kind of a standard comment. There are, do have some retaining walls, and that's just to let them know that anything over four feet in height does require plans and a permit from the Building Coes Department. We do still need to get their roadway lighting plan, which was something they worked through with, with Tennessee Electric, typically comes in with their construction plan. We'd ask them to label the critical lots with an asterisk, asterisk. They have done that. I think there's probably four lots. I think lots 230 to 233 are probably should be critical lots as well. Just for the new members to explain, explain what a critical lot is. That is a lot with topography over 20% slope, sinkholes, floodplains, bad soils, things like that to make it more difficult to build on. And so basically, they can still build on it, but it does require a plan that comes through, and the city engineer reviews that before they can get a bill, permit to address whatever the issues are with the lot. So. And basically, they need to be labeled on the plat so that as, probably goes through the process and the plat gets recorded, the, the Coes Department knows to ask for those on those lots. So. They needed to just provide some additional easement, or just additional dimensions for the easement on the rear lots, 324 and 25. They've done some of that. They needed a couple of more dimensions to be added, just so we know it can be found in the field exactly where that easement begins and ends. So we do need a couple of more dimensions on that. The, we'd ask, there's, there's a couple retaining walls in some of these areas. We'd ask for just an easement to show that for the, for maintenance of that wall, if it ever needed to happen, that the HOA could have somebody maintain those walls. The, there was a pretty deep, uh, deep sewer line shown, 25 feet and other, et cetera. So they have looked at that, and those have been reduced. Those will be evaluated and reviewed by the utilities department when they review the construction plans, but they did address that. They appear to have addressed, addressed that from what I can tell. Lots 14, 14 is just an informational comment regarding some of the lots may have to have a private grinder pump depending on the finished floor elevations. So that would need to remain. Number 15, there was one of those, they had a lot shown on an area that had some pretty intense amount of grading to be shown. They have moved that lot. So that's not a problem, issue anymore on that lot, 326, so we can remove that comment. Number, comment number 16 was from Public Works. That was kind of an informational comment regarding slopes within drainage easements. So they'll have to, again, that'll all be reviewed with the construction plans. We did ask them to add, this will tie into the development that was looked at on preliminary plat last month, I think, or the month before, the, on the Cooks Lane development over there. That area would be served by Consolidated Utility District for Water. This is Town of Smyrna Water, and so we did ask for a connection, kind of an emergency connection between the two so that there will be a valve and it will be closed off, but if we needed to be, we could exchange water there if needed. So that has been done. We asked them to provide room elevations for manholes and floor elevations. That's been done. Comments 19, 20, and 21 would all need to remain. Those have to do with some, some building code requirements for backwater valves and, as, as well as some stormwater issues, that those all be reviewed with the construction plans. So we can remove, um, 10, 12, 13, 15, 16, 17, 18. And with the, with those remaining comments, staff would recommend approval.
Move to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments remaining. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving this preliminary plat signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This is approved. Our next item under preliminary plats is Lee Road subdivision 6554 and 6558 Lee Road. Owner, developer, David Weekly Homes.
Chairman, I'm asking Catherine to log me as not.
Okay.
This is a preliminary plat. This is 100 lots on 36.4 acres. This is the entirety of the, the PRD that was approved here for the development. This was one actually that was approved a few months ago, but as they began to, doing a deeper dive on some of the design of it, they discovered it had some, some issues they had to change. Some of the road layout a little bit with regards to it. There was a cemetery and some areas with a, a intermittent stream that crosses the site. And so this is a re, a resubmital. Again, you all have approved this once before, but this is a resubmital. It's, was going to be actually what they actually develop and build as, as far as the layout. Again, number of lots didn't change, and all that has all stayed the same. It's just moved some things around. We had, again, several standard comments. One through six are all kind of standard comments that would all need to remain. This, this will require, and they do show dedication of some right-of-way along Lee Road as we're looking at do some, doing some improvements on that road. There is a sewer easement that's across an adjacent property owner that they're going to have to obtain that, and we'd ask them to provide that documentation that they're, because that's how they're going to extend sewer to this site as well. So that, that would need to remain. Comment number eight, again, they did show the easement for that. That has been addressed regarding, again, similar situation as what we saw in Gwyn Farms with the retaining walls. Comment number nine was kind of a comment from our utilities department because there was, I think, a concern about this. It's that all, all lots will be required to be serviced by gravity sewer and not with any type of pump station. And again, kind of similar comments, just some, some pretty deep sewer mains that again will have to be reviewed with the part of, with the construction plans. Number 11 was regarding the road names, approval from 901. We have received that. That can be removed. There is an existing driveway across a little bit of this property that goes to an adjoining property owner's house, and so they'll have to relocate that. They just need to show that on the construction plans. Comment 13, they did confirm CUD does not have fire flow here. They are going to have to sprinkle all of the houses in this development. They do have the 500 gallons per minute at 20 PSI, but not 1,000. Number 14, they had shown some, the street paving ending pretty significantly before they got to the property line. They've added, they've taken care of that, so we can remove that comment. They have shown the sidewalk along Lee Road, so that can be removed. We did ask for some bridge details. They are going to have to bridge again that, that, kind of that stream area. So those will come with the construction plans. So they have not submitted that. So we need to keep that comment for now. This PRD was approved of street trees along all the streets, and so we did ask them to show those to be planted outside the public right-of-way, kind of moving them away from the sidewalk and the road. So that's been, that has been done. It can be removed. Comment 18 will need to remain. There's three lots that are affected by two different drainage easements, and they do require an additional five-foot setback beyond the, the minimum, and that's just for purposes of, if we do have to do any maintenance in that area, we want a little more room between that easement and the house, just room to move. So, so that does need to remain. Comment number 19, they had shown kind of a blanket PUD on all the lots everywhere outside the building envelope, so I did ask to remove that. So that's been taken care of. And then comments 20 through 22 are from Public Works, and they'll need to review that as part of their construction plans. We want to keep those comments. And then 23 and 24 were from, were from CUD for the, the water provider there, and so we will keep those two. So we can remove, let's see, 8, 8, 11, 13, 14, 15, 17, and 19, and with the remaining comments, staff would recommend approval.
Kevin, comment 10. Utilities department has concerns of the 20-foot deep sewer cuts. Are those general concerns or are they specific to the, to the cuts?
It's basically, there's, there's some sewer mains that they had shown that were that deep, and they're just concerned if, if, the deeper the sewer line goes, the wider that ditch has to be to, if they have to get in and make any improved repairs. And if they're in the road, it may be completely tearing up the entire road, you know, or more. So that's where that came from. It's, it's a general concern, but it was specific. And I don't remember exactly where that sewer main is that they're concerned about on the project necessarily, but that was, again, a general concern, but it was specific to that. And again, they'll look at that again with their, as a review in the construction plans, but they did make a comment here for this review as well.
And that, that's something that, let's make it a question. Is that something that, that you're confident staff can work with?
I think they can work through that. Yeah.
Is it pretty routine that we do that?
Yes.
Okay. I know we spent a lot of time on this when we first saw it. So from staff's perspective, you're comfortable that we're either consistent or, or we're improved versus where we were when we began on this?
Yes. Yeah, all the concerns, you know, the neighbors had concerns with the buffering, and they have that, that shown where they, where they have that, and where they abut those neighbors, and there was concerns about traffic from this neighborhood getting into their driveways and different things. And so they were going to put some barriers up at the end of the roads when they get them built and things like that. So all those things can still be addressed with this.
Okay. I think we brought Charles into the conversation as far as traffic, and you were satisfied with, with what we were looking at here. Okay. All right. Other questions? satisfied with, with what we were looking at here. Okay. All right, other questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments, do I have a second?
Sure.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor of approving this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this preliminary plat is approved. Our last item under preliminary plats is Sim Ridge subdivision, section one, Tamlin Avenue and Spring Hill Drive, owner, developer, Old South Properties, Inc.
Yes, this is a preliminary, uh, plat for phase one of Sims Ridge, it's thirty-eight lots, um, thirteen point four-one acres, it is part of the Sim Ridge PRD, we say R3 on that, that's, and our staff comments, that should, should be a PRD, it is their, uh, PRD. Um, had, again, I have some similar various, uh, standard comments, kind of one through, uh, seven, um, and, so those would all need to remain. This is a project that, um, you all had seen this preliminary plat once before, and it was approved before, uh, however, that approval did expire before they began work, and so they had to come back, um, back to you all. Um, we had just a few comments regarding nine-one-one approval for the road names, we did get that, okay, I didn't see that, but we did, we did get that, so we can remove comment number eight. Uh, the master plan that was on the previous submittals did show a hundred and thirty lots, and the PRD approval was a hundred and twenty-eight, so that's been taken care of, so we can remove comment number nine. Uh, and comment number ten, uh, we did make a note that no construction traffic is allowed through those adjoining neighborhoods such as Spring Hill Drive, et cetera, and so they would be coming from, from Eden Springs Road West to get to here, so, um, they would say made a note of that, but we would just like to keep that in the comment just for everyone, so it's clear for everybody. Uh, and comment number eleven came from Public Works, and so that's regarding some of the, the drainage, um, area. They have indicated, the, engineer has indicated that has been taken care of, but I won't let the, uh, Public Works Department review that, with, again, they'll look at that with their construction plans, so, uh, we would recommend approval, uh, removing comments eight and nine, but with remaining comments would recommend approval.
Do I have a motion?
Move to approve with staff comments.
A motion to approve with staff comments, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor of approving this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this preliminary plat is approved. We are now on to final plats, our first item is three fifty-two West Sam Ridley Parkway, three fifty-two West Sam Ridley Parkway, owner, developer, Vestor Waldron Family Limited Partnership McDonald's.
Yeah, this is actually part of the, the, uh, Stone Trace, it's lot four A of Stone Trace. Um, this is a, an, an existing lot that's already approved, this is only in front of you all because there, there's an area of the utility easement that has to be dedicated as a public easement, that is additional to what was approved before. Uh, it's a C-two zone lot, um, one point one-seven acres, it's only one lot, it's an area, kind of a long, uh, Needham Drive there, kind of, if you're looking at the plat, it's the bottom, kind of bottom middle to, to the left there, that's where that easement would be added. Um, so we will have any comments on this when everything's been addressed, this is really just to, uh, to dedicate this easement, so, uh, they'll have to rerecord this lot to dedicate that easement to us, so, and with that, staff would recommend approval.
Talk about this lot, have they actually been built?
My understanding, they've, we've, we've got a development agreement that's been signed and everything, so I think they are gonna move forward.
Nothing else changed, right?
Nothing else has changed.
It's all been approved. I'll make a motion to approve. I've got a motion to approve, Mark, do I have a second?
I'll second.
A lot of seconds, a lot of happy meals, yeah. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this final plat is approved. Our next item under final plats is Gwyn Farms, phase three, section one, Cardiff Drive, owner, developer, Lennar Homes of Tennessee, LLC.
Yeah, this is, uh, the next, kind of the final plat for phase three, we just looked at the preliminary for section four, this is a portion of phase three of Gwyn Farms, uh, twenty-eight lots, thirty-three point one-one acres. Um, we had just a few comments, uh, really the comments, you know, one through three are kind of standard kind of comments, um, and then the, uh, comment number four, we'd ask them to show some additional dimensions, um, for, uh, again, a drainage easement that's on lots one seventy to one seventy-two, uh, because it's not a uniform location of an easement, so we ask for some additional dimensions so it can be located in the field if necessary, and then also to show the critical lots with an asterisk label, and they have taken care of that, so with those remaining comments, one, two, and three, we would, uh, recommend approval, it is consistent with the approved, uh, preliminary plat and, and PRD.
Discussion or questions? Yeah, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve, uh, with staff comments from Miranda, do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor of approving this final plat signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this motion is approved. Our last item under final plats is Patterson Property subdivision, re-subdivision of lots one through three, ten, eleven, twenty-three, twenty-four, Spring Hill Drive, and Seth Britton, PT.
I guess Seth Britton Point, I believe.
Okay. Owner, developer, M One Development, LLC.
Yeah, this is, uh, existing approved subdivision plat, it's actually been recorded. Um, they are, basically what they're wanting to do here, and this is only in front of you, cause it's, it involves seven lots, if, um, cause it really just, they're all existing lots, uh, they've moved some, some, uh, easements around and, and everything like that to where they're gonna actually be, be constructed, uh, for some drainage and, and those kind of things, is really what this is primarily for. Um, it's, it's seven lots, it's affecting seven of the lots, it's a zone R three, one point eight-eight acres. We had, um, basically just four comments, they're all minor comments, just adding signatures and surveyor stamp and those kind of things, so with those, those remaining comments, staff would recommend approval.
Okay. Questions for Kevin? Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve with staff comments.
Motion to approve with staff comments, I think Amy had a second.
It is.
Okay. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this motion's approved. We are now on to site plans, our first agenda item is Smyrna Echo Hotel, eight twenty-five Industrial Boulevard, owner, developer, at-home studio living, Smyrna, Tennessee, um, LLC Holiday Properties.
This is a fifty-one thousand two hundred square foot extended stay, four-story hotel on lot nine within that Colonial Town Park subdivision. The proposed location has road access to Town Park Drive and is located north of the existing Coles and Dollar Tree. Site would have one access point from the track to the south, which is north of those aforementioned developments. This site plan was previously approved back in August of two thousand twenty-two, but I believe that the site has changed hands, and they're essentially coming back with more or less the same development to you since that site plan has expired previously. Uh, so with that, square footage of vehicular use here on the site, one point three-three acres, square footage of open space landscape requirement is five thousand eight hundred and one square feet. They're proposing for six thousand four hundred and twenty-eight square feet of new landscaped area. There is a portion on the northern part of the site that is already existing, heavily vegetated, so they're proposing to leave a good chunk of that to provide a, a pretty substantial buffer to that track to the north. Uh, parking part of one hundred and twenty-four spaces, and they're showing for a hundred and thirty-one, and that does require five handicap spaces, which they're showing for. The landscape plan shows street trees, uh, shows trees lining the entrance to the property with additional trees and shrubs proposed throughout the parking areas and along the perimeter of the property. Existing dense vegetation is present on the northern portion of the track that is to remain as a buffer. The architectural elevations have smi, that have been submitted are different from what was previously approved, so, uh, just hang with me here, there's a lot of numbers being thrown out, so, uh, I'll go through these, uh, here. So, the architectural elevations submitted show the building to be built with a mixture of brick, stone, and glass glazing. Ephesus is shown as a secondary material. The east elevations approximately sixteen percent, which is visible from Industrial Wa, Boulevard, is clad in twenty-eight percent primary materials with the remaining seventy-two percent Ephesus. The west elevation fronting an industrial building in, located in Laverne has twenty-nine percent primary material and seventy-one percent Ephesus. The north elevation is shown to have twenty-three percent primary materials and seventy-seven percent secondary materials, with the southern elevation having fifteen percent primary materials and eighty-five percent secondary materials. Overall, this building does have twenty-seven percent primary materials and seventy-three percent secondary materials. Uh, the desire, desire view does require a minimum of fifty percent of the entire building to be finished with primary materials, so, they are significantly lacking in a required amount of primary materials for a building. Um, so, they have provided in front of you as well a, a vision study that they have performed, uh, to provide a mock rendering of where that building would be completed, finished elevations. From, there's probably, I believe, two or three viewpoints, looking at the site from roadways, to try to give you a better idea of what this building would look like finished, uh, so they're requesting more or less a waiver from what the traditional desire view would require for elevations, based on what their site distance studies show, and essentially showing that not much of this building would be visible, um, but since a portion of it is visible, we do require it to be, to meet these requirements, so, um, you do have those elevations in front of you. Standard comments, uh, one through five all remain, and then, staff comment one, the, more of a general comment, the building is required to be sprinkled, and will be required to be reviewed and approved by the State Fire Marshal's Office prior to issuance of a building permit. Comment two, another standard comment, a commercial, if a commercial kitchen is used as part of this development, a fifteen-hundred gallon grease trap will be required. Comment number three goes into, uh, what I was previously mentioning, the designer view manual requires this building to be clad in a minimum of seventy-five percent primary materials for any elevation visible from a public street. A portion of the fourth floor on the east elevation is visible from Industrial Boulevard, thus would be required to meet that seventy-five percent threshold. A previous hotel approved on this site did meet the requirement set forth in the designer view manual on that eastern elevation. Comment number four, at least fifty percent of the entire building facade is required to be finished with the primary exterior materials. And then comment number five, the plat may be required to dedicate easements for utilities serving this property prior to issuance of building permits. So, uh, all that to be said, they are requesting a variance from designer view. We have seen a site previously, back in two thousand twenty-two, that did meet all of our designer view requirements, uh, but as a result of, of their site distance studies and such, they are requesting a, uh, deviation from what we do require for that designer view, uh, but with that, staff would recommend approval with those remaining comments.
Which would include meeting design review, correct, the staff?
Our staff comments do include meeting design review, yes.
Okay. The prior submission did meet design review.
Correct, by a different applicant, different hotel brand, different everything else.
Okay. Well, we just had a long discussion tonight about consistency and fairness and following the rules, so.
Well, and, you know, to be fair, that the building is quite hidden compared to a lot of other hotels we can see in town, but I think when we start, you know, trying to forgive somebody because of their sightlines, is, we're not holding true to the consistency of the design review, so, um, I, I get why they want to do it, there's a cost factor involved, and, uh, up on that hill, I'm sure it's pretty expensive, but, um, this has a lot of Ephesus on it, and that's just something that we just have not been approving, so.
And just a question on the consistency, has, has a waiver ever been given to deviate from design review in this instance?
Not, not really, I mean, I mean, we've had some situations where a building is completely hidden, or, or where it's at, it's like the back of the building is not visible really at all, or, or something like that, because of a, I mean.
Like a.
Well, it supports like the theater.
The movie theater, the back of the movie theater, it's got a rock wall behind it, I mean, you know, so, I mean, yes, it has happened, but it's usually a specific, there's an instance or a reason behind it, it's not just, you know, this is one, you know, it's, yes, it's, it's back, it's far away from many public streets, but it's, if you go to that part of the shopping area, you're gonna see it, it's a four-story building.
It'll be risen, right, up on that hill.
Yeah.
I know there'll be some variation sightlines, you probably would not see, but twenty-something percent of our material requirements being met, and I just don't see that.
Other questions, comments?
So you need a motion on including staff comments to meet design review, am I correct?
Correct, because, uh, it is comment number four about meeting, uh, primary materials and meeting design review, and comment three, we talked about that there, so, staff is recommending approval, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, with the, with those comments, which would, would make the building in compliance.
Yeah.
Okay.
All we could deny, and they'll come back.
Well, um, is the applicant here? I don't know, Chairman, if they wanna visit and speak about it, that's up to you, but, uh, they may be, they want to plead their case, but is a deferral or withdrawal or anything they may want to consider as well, come back later with something different?
We could certainly ask him that question.
Well, that's up to the chairman.
I'll, I'll, I will allow you to, if you can give us your name and address, please.
Uh, my name is Reed Tally, address is twenty-five oh-five Oakland Ave, Avenue in Nashville, Tennessee. Thanks for letting me talk. Um, I a hundred percent understand, um, the, the rationale between the masonry requirement, I, I support that. Um, these hotels, yeah, easy enough, right, done. You know, as we all know, these hotels are, they're hard to make look good, right, and that's the reason that, you know, um, I think Wyndham has done a great job. The, the original developer of the site, it was, uh, it was a one-off project, it was pretty vanilla. I get why they met the requirement, it, it didn't really help that much, but, but, but Wyndham has done a really good job, we think, um, changing the massing of this building to try to give it a little bit more breakup in how it works, hopefully make it stand apart from a lot of the other products that are out there. Um, this is.
With primary materials.
Well, and the reason that we submitted like this was that, honestly, we just submitted what we thought was gonna be the best-looking product, it wasn't about cost, the original one doesn't have any masonry on it.
We're not big Ephesus fans?
A hundred percent, yeah, and I get it. Um, what they did here with the Ephesus, though, is, is it creates the bands, they have the, the, the recess lines, they have ways that they try to, that whenever you do masonry and you just lipstick it on there, it tends to give an institutional look, especially with these type of buildings, because there aren't like balconies, there aren't, it's not residential, you don't have a lot of recesses, opportunities like that, this is flat, and so masonry, it does have tendency to take something away in this instance. Um, there's been, this isn't the first time that this has come up, um, Gallatin, we're under construction on a project right now, this exact same project, they had the same masonry requirement, and I can't remember the, the ask on their behalf, but what we ended up doing was, was a forty percent, I believe it was thirty to forty percent, and what we did was, the. And what we did was, the, the top elevation on the left, that white portion, that became all masonry. And that allowed us to, to break it up, still get closer to their ask, but you still maintain the integrity of the original design. And so that's an option that we would, that we would definitely be willing to entertain with you. But we just came with our best foot forward, what we think is actually a better design, even though it does have a material that's historically less appealing. And the, as you can see, you know, the, the sightlines, it's, it's, I believe that our vision study was like twelve hundred feet away at the closest public street. And so it doesn't matter what the material is going to be, you're not going to tell the difference in what it is. So, thanks for your consideration.
I don't want to speak on behalf of the chairman or anybody else. I just think we always look for the same consistency from everybody that comes in here. And if you can get to forty percent, I think you can get to the number we're looking for. I mean, yeah, it might take a little bit of redesign.
Right.
But if you're talking about doing masonry on the white portion of that drawing, that gets you closer.
Right.
Maybe there's something up the middle or something, you could break it up and color it up and, you know. It's not that we don't want you here, we just want to be consistent.
Yeah, I understand, yeah. It's, it's a, it's a challenging one.
Anything else?
Would a deferral till next month help you produce something?
We actually already have that design, we're happy to send it to planning or to Kevin. And if that's something that, I'm not sure what the process is like, if, if that.
Well, deferral just puts it all off till next month.
Right, right.
Or depending on what this planning commission were to decide, based on the staff comments, if they felt it was approvable, then you would know you have to meet those guidelines.
Right. Well, I'd rather defer it and, and get that design updated, if that's what it is. Otherwise, conditional approval would be just as fine and let us move forward with some.
Well, I guess we, I don't know how we're gonna vote.
Right, right, yeah.
But they both work kind of the same way.
Right.
If you will, but.
It's just, you know, does this commission want to see the plans before you approve?
Yeah, I think deferring it allows us to see the revised plan.
That's the only difference.
To Amy's point.
That's the difference.
I think that's probably would be.
Right.
Yeah, because what we're, what we would be voting on is what we have now, so.
Right.
And just requiring all the improvements according to staff comments.
Right.
So we'd, we'd be getting it right one way or the other.
Right.
But I think I'd like to see.
I would too.
Perfect.
Yeah, so, so are you requesting a deferral?
I am.
Okay.
I'll see you in a month.
It has to come from you, that's my question.
Perfect.
We're still gonna need.
You're gonna need a motion to approve.
We're still gonna need a motion.
I will make that motion to honor his deferral request.
To May twenty-twenty-four.
Yes.
And I'll second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to defer to our next planning commission meeting in May of twenty-twenty-four. Do I have a second? Motion and second, further discussion? All those in favor of this deferral signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this is deferred to next month. Next site plan is Volunteer State Bank, Huggin Lane, owner developer KKS General Partnerships, Volunteer State Bank.
This Volunteer State Bank is proposing a five thousand eight hundred and eighty-six square foot facility in the Point Commercial subdivision. This property does have three road fringes, which include Sam Ridley Park West, Huggin Lane, and Jackdaw Drive. The site would have a singular access point off of Jackdaw Drive to be positioned at the furthest extent away from the intersection of Huggin Lane and Jackdaw Drive. The planning commission did approve this site plan back in February of last year, and that site plan has expired. So they have came back to, they did modify the building slightly. It was a just under forty-eight hundred square foot building previously, and now they're just under a fifty-nine hundred square foot building. So not a massive increase in size, but that is a slight difference. The overall layout of the site has stayed about the same since it was previously approved, but once again, they're back here seeking reapproval. The vehicular use here at the site, about a half acre, that does require two thousand two hundred and thirteen square feet of landscaping. They are showing for four thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet. Parking required of twenty-nine spaces, and they're showing for twenty-nine. And that does require two handicap parking spaces, which they're showing. The landscape plan has changed since the PACM last week. It does, for this iteration, it does show street trees along all three road fringes, with shrubbery lining the parking lot area. Additional vegetation is shown around the base of the building and in landscape islands. One of the differences from the plan last week to the plan this week, there is a gap of about a hundred and forty-two feet along Huggin Lane of landscape, in which traditionally our designer view does require street trees spaced forty-foot on center with some offset shrubbery of sorts in between them. There are some utilities that run parallel to Huggin Lane. Our utilities department does like a gap about ten foot off of the utility lines to ensure those root systems do have adequate space to grow without impeding in those utility lines. So in order to keep consistent with that, there is that pretty decent-sized gap along Huggin Lane. But other than that, they have, they're in compliance with our landscape requirements. Architectural elevations show the building to utilize all primary materials with brick, stone, and glass glazing. Additionally, aluminum panels and metal coping are shown as accent materials. The elevations previously, while packets went out, did not meet our designer view. Since the previous plans went out, they have resubmitted new elevations. The elevations at this time now meet the seventy-five percent primary material building requirement, and the entire building is comprised of ninety percent primary materials with ten percent accent materials of the ACM and metal coping. So all that to be said, this building now does meet designer view, and we are good on that standpoint. Standard comments, one through six all remain, as well as a couple staff comments. Staff comment one, once again, the retaining wall comment, anything over four feet for the retaining wall will require engineer plans to be submitted as well as obtaining a permit for it. So comment remain. Comment number two, we asked them to label the domestic water main differently from the reuse water main, that was a utilities comment. So that comment will remain, let utilities determine if that has been addressed sufficiently. Comment number three through seven have all been addressed and can be removed at this time. Some minor comments regarding the landscaping, as well as discrepancies as far as some number calculations are concerned. But staff comments one and two remain, the rest have been addressed adequately, and with that, staff recommend approval.
Okay, questions for Mitchell? So in summary, we're either meeting or exceeding design review.
For the elevations.
For the elevations, and we have trees, and we have shrubbery that's approved, and any variation that's being requested is done on behalf of the town.
Correct.
Okay. Other questions or comments?
Move to approve staff comments.
Have a motion to approve the staff comments, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor of approving this site plan signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, site plan is approved. Next, we have a mandatory referral?
Yeah, this is a mandatory referral for a sidewalk project the town is getting ready to do along Rock Springs Road. This is on the north side of Rock Springs Road, from Division Street to Mason Tucker Drive. This will, what this is, the request is for the planning commission to, to review this, or obtaining these easements, find out, and find whether or not it's in keeping with the adopted comprehensive plan of the town, recommend, make a recommendation to town council, staff would recommend this. This is something that has been talked about for a while, and we're finally, have been able to, we're working on making, making it happen, so we, staff would recommend approval.
Okay.
Is that the side, was that sidewalk on the Division Street side or the opposite side? They were talking about.
It will start across, and then when it gets down to David Collins, it will switch over to the east side.
Okay.
That's where it will cross the road there on Rock Street.
Just curious. Other questions?
I know that there's a couple of very deep ditches on Rock Springs Road, right in front of, actually, where we're fixing to put that subdivision we just talked about, close to Mason Tucker. Will they, how does that affect a sidewalk?
This is, this is a project.
Yeah. It's, that'll, that'll actually be designed at first, any drains through that area, if it, it would have to be accommodated.
That's what, will it now go under the sidewalk, I mean, with big culverts or what?
Honestly, don't know that.
The culverts will be paved through there, because it will be a curb and gutter section as the other sidewalk down through the area. So those ditches will probably be paved and curbed and gunted.
I think it'd have to be, yeah.
Yeah, and it, well, like I said, it'll, I think it'd be a big improvement to those residents there removing that ditch, trying to maintain it and bring it up to a curb and gutter section.
Other questions, comments? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
A motion to approve the mandatory referral, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving this referral signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it is approved. We are now on to the April bond review report, which appears quite lengthy.
Yeah, it is, we had a short one last month, but we're paying for it this month. So anyway, I'll go through this as quickly as I can.
The shortage in this.
First one, Wind Farms, section one, phase two, I'm sorry, phase one, section two. This is one that has been as large or close to, or largely built out. They did contact, the developer did say they were going to begin work within thirty to sixty days and complete the work by the end of the summer. This one is one we've only had for, actually, I only had it a year, so we would recommend a six-month extension on this, just to give them time to get that done this summer, hopefully. Hidden Hill, section five, phase one, this is one that, since this bond report was done, work has been completed, and we can go to maintenance and reduce that to ten thousand, go to one year as their maintenance bond. The next one, the buyer subdivision, that's for a fire hydrant he's gonna add to, before he builds a house there on that one lot subdivision. They have not done that yet, but they, so we would just recommend an extension on that one. It's just for, again, to add a hydrant. Wind Farms, phase one, section one, same comments as before. This is one that's not, it's close to a hundred percent built out, but they had made the same comment, again, we've only had it a year. Would recommend a six-month extension here to get that done, again, hopefully this summer. The next two are both patent retreat, phase one, as well as patent retreat section, or phase two, section one. They have indicated they are, well, at least for section one, they were paving, or planning on paving that section very soon. And then phase two, section one, looking at, they're getting pricing on that, looking at paving that this spring or early summer. There's, both of these, we've had these a while. I would recommend no more than a three-month extension on those, because they need to go ahead and get those finished up. Most of those are nearing or completely built out, or nearing completely, completely built out. And I actually had a phone conversation with a resident in that neighborhood a couple weeks ago, and they're, they're not happy that the roads haven't been paved, so, and I understand. So I do want to go ahead and try to get that, give them a shorter extension to hopefully get that, that work done soon. Six Cedars Business Park, they're off of Seven Oaks Boulevard. This was a water and sewer bond. It's, this is, we can reduce this one, it's, it's all there, they've got some things they gotta work on, but it's all in the ground. So we do, would recommend a reduction on that one to ninety-two thousand. That was a large bond to begin with, because it was a hundred percent bond. Just reduce that to ninety-two thousand, extend it one year as their maintenance bond. Cedar Hills, section two, phase three, this one, this is the end of their maintenance period. Developer did say they're trying to get everything wrapped up before the deadline, which is April twenty-sixth. If they're able to do that, we could release it, otherwise we would just get the three-month extension on that one to hopefully get that finished soon, if they don't get done by April twenty-sixth. The section one or block one of the Vintage, again, a pretty large bond on this one, because they bonded quite a bit of work, so they could go ahead and get their plat recorded. A lot of the work has been done, there's still a lot of work to be done, but we can reduce this one to three hundred thousand and do extend it one year. Woodcrest Four, this one is built out, they have, this is one we're not recommending more than a three-month extension on this one. Mr. Constable has made, made some progress on a lot of his developments out there in Woodcrest and Buckingham Place, but would like to see that, same progress made on this phase of Woodcrest, so no more than just a three-month extension on that one, have to save them out. Hunter's Point Annex, section three, phase one, this is the end of their maintenance period. They got some work they gotta do on a ditch and, and detention area. And so I did talk to that developer this week, and they were, they are, they're not gonna be finished by that, that maintenance period, or by May fifth, but they're, they are making some progress there, hopefully soon, as they're working on some, some houses on some, in the adjacent development, adjacent phase, they gotta do some work on some houses there, get those built to make sure they can get the ditch finished. So would recommend the three-month extension on that one, because it doesn't appear like they're gonna be finished by May fifth. Building is a green tree, section three, again, this is the end of their maintenance period. They get a couple cleanup items, and they get that done by May sixth, we can release that. But otherwise, do a three-month extension. Same way with Buckingham, section two, phase one, it's the end of their maintenance period. If they can get those remaining items cleaned up, we could release that, otherwise, three-month extension. And then Cedar Hills, section four, phase two, this is one that's, the only one of these that are not nearing completion as far as the housing. They're about thirty-eight, thirty-nine percent built out. Again, we've only had this one a year, we would recommend a one-year extension on that one, so. And that is the report.
Does anybody have any specific questions for Kevin concerning the bond report?
It was riveting, as usual.
As usual. I think, is the word paved baby pave, it's time. We're in the season.
Yes, it's time, it's time to start paving in the spring.
All right. Mitchell, anything else?
We need a motion to approve.
Oh, nice, yeah. I'm ready to start paving. I got a motion to approve, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the bond review report signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it is approved. Now, Mitchell, anything? Charles? Hercules? Catherine? Kevin?
I'll have one quick thing, welcome our new members. I do want, I've mentioned this to them the other day, I do need to still send this to them. We had some training, there was a virtual training that you could look at or review on your, on your computer at your, at your time, when you have time, and stop and restart when you need to. I will get that link sent to everyone to, for, to help, as obviously as we're performing your role as a commission member. That's all I got.
Counselor? Anything from the commission?
Yeah, I just wanted to commend the staff, the level and attention to detail on these plat reviews, I think is just outstanding.
Thank you, Charles.
Welcome to the two new people down there.
Yes, welcome.
Selena, welcome. Mitchell, I think we need a little bit more of a setback up here, on our side setbacks.
He's been encroaching me, and so has she.
It's easy for you to say. With that note, we stand adjourned.